I will call this meeting to order of the Southbridge School Committee at 7:15 PM on Tuesday, April 12th in council chambers. I will go ahead and do roll call. Ms. DeMello.
Present.
Ms. LaPryori.
Present.
Mr. Messier.
Present.
Mr. McKenzie.
Present.
Ms. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Thomel.
Present.
And Mr. Murch is present. Go ahead and we will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to agenda item number three, public input. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment to the school committee on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to brief overview of agenda item number four, the receivers' announcements, the budget update for FY '23. We just did have the public hearing, so if you want to highlight it for the meeting.
Sure. So, in the public hearing, we did discuss the fiscal year '23 budget. And from a very high level, what we're requesting is that the state funds that have been allocated to Southbridge through Chapter 70 be utilized in a manner, one, that supports our educational programming aligned with our district turnaround; two, that supports us aggressively attacking learning loss in of our students as a result of pandemic; and then, three, we've identified a pathway that would allow the town of Southbridge to also help us address the vast capital needs of our schools. Again, utilizing the funding that's being transmitted from the state to Southbridge for education, so we can accomplish our capital need study and begin to move forward with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to address significant capital needs at our schools, all with the increased funding from Chapter 70.
Alrighty, thank you very much. I appreciate that. We'll move on to agenda item number five, chairperson's announcements. First off, I would like to congratulate Ms. Maureen Gullickson on closing out a successful tenure with the Southbridge Public School System and a career. She had years of dedicated service to this district that she served with passion and good heart, and we thank, and I'm sure Dr. Valar is very thankful for her tenure during with Southbridge Public Schools, and we wish her the best of luck in her life in retirement. Also, I would like to congratulate Ms. Kelly Gellino, who has been approved, been appointed the principal of the Eastford Road School as of yesterday. For the past three years, she has served as the assistant principal of the Riverside Magnet School at Goodwin University in East Hartford, Connecticut. While an assistant principal, Ms. Gellino worked with all stakeholders to create an improved system for instruction, intervention, PBIS behavior, and culturally responsive teaching as a parent and educator. Excuse me, I can't read tonight. Ms. Gellino is passionate about creating positive relationships among all stakeholders. She believes that this is the core of a successful education. She also brings her love and knowledge of literacy instruction into all aspects of her work. As a reading teacher, coach, and specialist, she understands the role of literacy instruction in student success. Her educational philosophy is simple: enable all children to reach their full potential. Eastford Road's current acting principal, Ms. Kathleen Seifert, will return to her role as a district leader of teaching and learning. And she would, Dr. Valar would like to thank Ms. Seifert for all that she has done for the students of Eastford Road School. Throw in a nugget as a parent: thank you very much for what you did at West Street while you were my son's principal. Don't forget, I remember. I'm greatly appreciative for your service to the district, and I'm glad you were willing to step up in a time of need, and I'm glad that we have this role now filled. So, I do thank those involved. I will say also, as to chairperson announcements, there's still time for nomination papers. If you're willing to run for a town office, go ahead and see our town clerk pull papers. You've got till about a week and a half, I think maybe, a little more, to get those papers in. Public service is extremely gratifying, and you can make the positive change in this community by running for a public office, so I would encourage you to do so. Those nomination papers are due, I believe, the 26th. I may be wrong, it might be the 21st.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yes. So, they are due the 26th. There is still time, 39 signatures to fill a position. The list of open spots is available at the town clerk's office. With your permission, Dr. Valar, I would like to open up the agenda item number six, Members' Forum for Questions from the School Committee in regards to what you presented in the budget hearing, if that's all right with you.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, so I will go ahead and open the member forum. Does any member of the committee have a question for Dr. Valar on the budget? Mr. McKenzie, go ahead.
Yes, the pages on this budget were not numbered, but I counted them. Counted the pages. So, on the 11th page, there was a, yeah, the 11th page, it says, "Southbridge Foundation Budget and Average Per Pupil." It says 34,000, no, that's 34 million? Now, I'm a little thrown off because I'm not fully understanding this figure as opposed to on page 14, which is three pages later. It says, "We are requesting that the town of Southbridge uses educational state aid in the following ways." And then it says on the bottom, "FY 2023 Operating Budget Request is 30,537,993." So, I'm confused as to, one says budget, 34 million, and the other one says budget request, 30 million. Could you help me understand this?
Mr. McKenzie, that's a...
No, go ahead.
That's a great question. So, and apologies for not clarifying it earlier. The foundation budget formula that's outlined by the state, it's a little confusing of what's included and what's not included. But the biggest difference here is that this is about what is the minimum amount to be spent for within a school for public education, which includes students who go to charter schools. So, if you think about, almost in essence, the public school budget, the Southbridge Public Schools, plus the cost of tuitions for students attending charter schools is approximately this amount. There's a few other things that are included and excluded. What's included in there would be like health insurance paid for employees, some town-related expenses to support the school department. What's excluded out of that is transportation. So, it's not an easy sort of apples-to-apples of how you get from the foundation budget to the appropriation. But because it's such an important driver of state aid and of charter schools, we wanted to try to explain it, and we can work on doing a better job next year.
All right, thank you very much.
Great question.
All right, does any other member of the committee have any? Ms. DeMello, anybody else? All right, so we'll move on to you.
Yeah, I was just going to say that on the proposals, including the Facility Master Plan and all of that, I really appreciate seeing that, and I feel like that's something that I would have hoped for, and I'm really thankful that you guys are putting that on there. If I'm understanding it correctly, it feels like you guys are trying to help us out here and figure out a way to actually get our facility needs taken care of in an appropriate way and a way that really makes sense to me without having to raise additional funding on top of what we're already required to do. And I, as a taxpayer and resident here, appreciate the effort that's gone into this and the idea that's here. So, thank you for doing that. I also was just thinking, as we were mentioning some of the issues that have come up and the serious needs that we do have for our facilities still moving forward, that obviously this is trying to work on those, but we have a long way to go in resolving these issues. And I know last fall, when those numbers were presented to us and the whole study and all of that, one of the questions that I personally had in going through that later was that it seemed like a very large percentage of those maintenance needs were relevant to the Cole Avenue Building. And in going to visit the Cole Avenue Building, I think we have 40-something students that actually meet there on a regular basis. We also have administrative offices, we also have the preschool. But it seemed like a huge cost and maintenance need versus a small actual usage. And also knowing that we did build the new high school already, so that, I think the initial idea, if I understand that correctly, was that we were trying to replace the Cole Avenue Building. So, I'm just wondering, in this study, in this Facility Master Plan, would they be considering the possibility of trying to eliminate the Cole Avenue facility entirely? Either sell it or something like that? And either consolidate the things that are currently happening at Cole Ave to our other facilities? Or come up with a smaller, more easily maintainable location for the things that are currently happening at Cole Avenue? That is a huge question, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of dumping that all on you right now. But just, I would love to see that as a thought included in this master plan study, or at least considered for this master plan study.
Thank you for that, and that's actually one of the underlying reasons and rationale for needing to do that study. You're right, on the surface, for sure, Cole Ave is a huge percentage of the repair cost. But, you know, $8, $9 million of roofs and then boilers in the other three schools is also a very big deal. But we have to be fiscally responsible as we look at this. We have to look at enrollment projections across the district and try to figure out what the future holds for numbers of students, and look at what's the best, most feasible way for Southbridge to not only provide a stellar education for kids, but do it in a way that it can afford, right? Because Mr. Racine stole one of my lines, but we live in an ecosystem, right? And so, the school district's part of Southbridge. You can't take the two apart. And so, we can't absorb all the municipal finances and then expect to be, to thrive as a school system if there's no police, no fire, no DPW, no other services. So, it's a balance that we have to strike. So, looking at the use of the facilities and trying to determine, can we shift programs to different buildings? Can we add on to a building and then raise old Cole Ave? There are a lot of, you know, you need experts that can tell you the cost of those things, but certainly they need to be looked at and discussed at length with the town council because ultimately, they own these buildings. And then, school committee has to determine, are we going to keep using Cole Ave? Because essentially, we can abandon the building, give it back to the town, and no longer is part of the school's operating budget. But there's a problem with that. You mentioned, we have 41 students there, we have Head Start, which has their students there, and then the administrative offices are there. In fact, I'm moving back into Cole Ave on April vacation to give the high school back more space because they need space. So, we have to look at all that, and that's a critical part of that study. It's also important because the Massachusetts School Building Authority won't give us a dime if we don't have a master plan in place. They want to make sure that the town has figured this out and is committed to go in whatever direction they're going to fund. So, it has to be done well, and it has to be done in partnership with members of the town council as well, so that there is support and that the state understands that this is something we're going to commit to. And so, yes, I think it has to be done in a fiscally responsible manner for Southbridge. It's critically important.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Shea.
Following the issues in Washington, one of the things they're talking about is having preschool for every child. Are we going to include this in our master plan?
So, right now, there's not a funding avenue for the preschool yet. I know there's discussions about it. I would welcome the opportunity to have every child universal preschool. I think that's a great idea. There's some significant hurdles for all communities, which sometimes politicians leave off when they talk about these neat new programs. So, one of them would be just what we discussed. Where would we house universal preschool for all of our students? What impact does it have on existing universal preschool programs? And in my previous job, I did a lot of work lobbying for preschool in the state of Connecticut, and that was always one of the balances. You have private providers, and you have public providers, and so it's kind of a patchwork. And so, how that will kind of flow through that, if in fact, they get support for it? It'd be a phenomenal investment for our children, there's no doubt about it. It's one of those investments that if you look at it over time, you get every cent back. It's very good for children to have quality preschool. But I do think, if the money were here tomorrow, our problem would be, where would we hold class? Because we'd need a lot of classrooms. Never mind the impact on our local providers. So, we'll have to follow that issue and see where it goes. But on premise, it's absolutely great for kids to get into preschool.
Oh, I agree on that. I just wanted to be sure that when you do the master plan, which I will be supporting, that you make sure that you think about that as part of the issues.
It's a good point.
Vice Chairman Shea, if I may. Also, during my experience with WCC's Head Start, I will say that of the 240 students that we served during 2012 to 2015, which was my tenure, 150 of them came out of Southbridge. And they used to be at the YMCA on Marcy. Now, they are going to be right next to your office here at, here at Cole Ave. My son went to the Cole Ave location, switched from Marcy Y to over to Cole Ave, and it did present its own hurdles. So, the funding for universal pre-K, though very great in sentiment, I will say, as managing and part of a council that managed a pre-K program, it is extremely difficult. Not only just the location, which we fought with losing our servicing Webster in Oxford, we lost our Oxford location at the Woodward Building on Route 12. We had to literally overnight try to figure out where to put 60 students overnight. They kicked us out on a Tuesday. We had to figure out a location by Thursday to the federal government. We needed to have a course of action. So, it can present its own trials because there are federal regulations when it comes to preschool. So, universal pre-K, if implemented, though Dr. Valar is, brings up the point, where, but not only where, but there are federal requirements as to how those facilities need to meet a certain standard of construction. So, it may also increase the monetary need on that, on a universal pre-K front. Because I have a gut feeling, if they're going to pass universal pre-K at a federal level, it's going to come with the federal requirements for preschool, which is laid out by the Office of Head Start, so...
Oh, absolutely. Which again is even more reason why, if we do a master plan, we should at least put like a codicil in. If this happens, then these things need to happen.
Now, I will also say that the Office of Head Start and the United States Department of Education did provide additional funding to Head Start and early Head Start here for WCAC for facilities management and upgrades. So, that may be a benefit to the budget, but like Dr. Valar said, it's a bunch of "I don't know" and "we'll see," to put it simply. You put it professionally, I put it simply. It's a bunch of "I don't know, we'll see." But it's definitely something that I think, as it comes down the pipeline and we get more concrete things, I'm with you. We need to look at it as far as the facilities management point. Maybe paying a universal pre-K would pretty much encompass Head Start, so we already have a good facility in, on the northern wing of Cole Ave, but it's definitely something to look at. And to your point, you know, Cole Ave is still being used to service the underprivileged and kids in this district, that especially at such an early age with early Head Start, which starts from zero to three. Head Start is four and five. So, that you're getting them, you have 2,000 days from the time a child is born to kindergarten. And preschool, no matter what facet, gets them ready for kindergarten to go to Eastford Road. So, that finite point in that short timeframe is very important. And Head Start, and we do have pre-K services throughout town as well, do help with that. But it's definitely something that could be rolled in, but we may also get additional federal aid for. So, to ping to your point, I'm glad you brought that up because we can elaborate on that, and it's definitely a point of contention and potential budgetary issues. My question is, is we have had an issue over the past decade, for the better part, on teacher retention. And to be frank, people looking for more money and more benefits, no matter what career you have. Myself included, I changed jobs because I'm getting better paid and I get better benefits as a technician. So, what is Southbridge doing in budgeting in this budget to help compete with other, not necessarily high dollar, because, you know, we're not Sutton, we're not on the Cape, but mid-dollar range, like throughout the rest of the state? What are we doing to compete with them to try to draw people here? Because no offense to you, being under receivership is a very hard grab to try to grab good educators. The potential for an upswing is great, but the bottom line is dollar for dollar, benefit for benefit. What in this budget have we changed to help garner more educators and better educators? More educators to stay and better educators to come in to this district under receivership?
Yeah, I think that the budget supports our contract with our teachers' union, it supports our career ladder structure. So, we start teachers, we can start teachers at $49,500, and then it moves aggressively up a ladder to $70,500 on the latter portion of our salary structure. What I'm able to do and have been doing is negotiate with candidates, and I can place them on the ladder wherever they need to be, if they're quality. I have made offers to individuals at the top of the ladder, particularly if you're a science or math teacher or special education educator, you know? And unfortunately, that doesn't always land the individual either. What I find, because I have conversations with every candidate that we hire that's going to be a certified teacher, so I interview all of them. What I'm finding is people are moving for a lot of different reasons. Economics is certainly part of it, but a lot of it seems to be life choices, and so they're looking at where they might live. And our folks are moving out of Boston, that's been a kind of a trend, and they're trying to relocate. So, I've had some folks with, I'll get back to you because I have a couple of offers, and I'm trying to figure out which one works best with my new situation. On top of that, we are able to offer signing bonuses. So, that has helped also kind of seal the deal for folks. It's typically averaging around $2,500 to $3,500 and paid out after 90 days of employment is our typical structure. It helps. There are a couple of areas, though, that quite honestly, it's, there's just a lack of individuals prepared for the role. So, ESL teachers, very difficult to find, special educators, massive shortages, again, not just in Massachusetts. Mathematics and science, they're very difficult to fill, so you got to pounce on folks when you do get the applicants. A lot of ours have been new educators that we have to invest in and develop, and I think that's the other part of the equation. People work for other people. And so, when I have a stable principal in a school, that helps retain staff. We get a lot more turnover when leaders keep turning over, right? So, when you get that stable person, you get a stable staff. Often, maybe initially, you get a shakeup, and then it becomes continuity and the culture begins to build. So, I think having good leaders in each of the buildings is really important. Consistency pays. You know, people want to work for someone, they want to know who they work for, and that relationship also matters.
Okay, and one last question, and I'll move on to another member of the committee that does have...
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I did go to one of the budget meetings of the town, and they're thinking about increasing the percentage of monies that we contribute to the health system. I think they're talking about going up to, what, 70, 70, 30?
Talk about health insurance.
That's very helpful. We currently do 60, 40 splits on the premium.
And they're losing police and fire, so...
Yep, it is a difficult thing. I actually, it's one of the points that I try to be very transparent in that final interview with people as they're making their decision. It does us no good to have someone take the job and then quit because they didn't know the information.
So, one last question, and then I'll move on to other members of the committee, if you guys don't mind. So, as I used to be in management in the automotive industry, and we love to recruit younger people because that means potential for grooming and growth. We can get you to learn this district, learn your career, and move forward. You know, when I was mechanic, you could learn the shop, you can learn the customer demographic, you could learn your career. We can help build you up from changing oil and rotating tires to doing alternators, alignments, control arms, things like that. So, we always looked at our younger candidates as an upswing. So, I'm sure you're definitely in the same boat because you and I had this discussion over the last decade and a half. The teacher market has dropped by almost 50% for teachers that are coming in after graduating college, variably to when teachers are retiring or moving on to a different career or a different field. So, my question is, is what are we providing our younger educators, whether they come in as TAs or come in as first-year educators? I know you're looking for masters, preferably speaking, especially with our curriculum needs. But what are we offering our younger candidates as far as career growth to not only help them grow as an educator, but grow as an educator in this district and entice them to continue to stay?
Yeah, so what we, I think, are quite good at now is we offer six full days of professional development. We offer professional development every Wednesday, which, so there's built into our schedule a lot of training and development. But we've also formed some strategic relationships with universities. So, the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth, for example, we have a program offered to teachers in district where we point out how they can use some of their benefits on course reimbursement from the district, combined with both federal loans and some financing that the university helps them with. And they can get a master's degree in courses taught in our district. So, it's a, you know, local program with support from both the district paying and the university finding them grants, et cetera. So, folks can get a master's degree at little cost. So, that's very attractive, I think, to many individuals. We've had two cohorts of that so far. We also have a relationship with Assumption where our teachers can get reduced rates for courses at Assumption. And we also then take Assumption students, particularly in Adjustment Council, Social Work, and get them placements if they need them in our district. So, those type of strategic partnerships with universities help our district by helping our staff, right? And so, I think that matters. It's not a guarantee. We've had folks go through programs and still leave, but it certainly makes us a little bit more competitive. So, I think those are examples of things that we're trying to do that make a difference for our new teachers.
Mr. Messier, I do want to move to you. One last question. You do say that we pay for part of that tuition with UMass Dartmouth. Is that factored into the budget in this book? Is there, is that available as far as the numbers that we're looking at for the particular cohorts? And by the way, I'm not detracting from it, I think it's absolutely phenomenal to try to recruit employees and to try to help educators grow in their career. It's not common, so it's definitely a niche that we can grab people with. But is that factored in this book that we can take a look at and see what those numbers are, or is that not available at this time?
Well, it is factored in as a part of our contract with our Teachers Association. So, when you look into that contract, it'll show that we offer each teacher $1,000 in course reimbursement. And so, that's monies that they can apply. They got to get advanced permission to take the course, and then they can get reimbursement for the course cost. And so, that's part of that structure.
So, that's already projected for what you're looking at? Okay, cool.
Yeah, when we build the budget, we have to, you know, make some assumptions based on what do we think the costs are going to be associated with that.
Is that projection good? Is that number going up?
Well, our, you know, our salary numbers were, we are... Well, our, you know, our salary numbers were, we are pleased that we have a contract with the teachers. So we know what the numbers are. And so we're able to build that into the budget.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Messier. I appreciate it. I'll move on to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mertz, to you. So a couple of things I wanted to bring up. First, to your point, Mr. Mertz, this is obviously my first go at the school committee thing. But as a teacher, I can kind of speak to the retention part. I think young teachers want to be where they can grow, not just from a professional standpoint, but where they can invest their life in a community. And so in order to get people to invest in a community, you really want them to live in your community. If not live in your community, you want them to live near your community. Because in order for them to show that they're investing, they're, they've got to be doing things with the community, right? They got to be, you know, whether it's going to church in the community that they work, or volunteering in the little league that they, you know, so their kids can play in the little leagues, or going and going to participate in some sort of library event. Those are the things, I think, even when you consider the benefits that a person can receive in any school district, whether they're high or whatever, I think young teachers are going to build families, and they want to build their families in places where they can see themselves, regardless of whatever the funding is, or whatever the budget is, or whatever salary they get, or whatever the health insurance may be. Because as teachers, you're going to, you're not going to get the most out of a master's, you know, as teachers where your, your, your career is dedicated to service, right? So I wanted to bring that point back to climate and culture. And I was really happy looking at page one, Wally. I didn't count 11 pages, I just counted one. You have climate and culture at the top, you know, and it's obvious what, what you're doing to improve climate and culture through different systems, and you're doing all these surveys, and that's fantastic. But I also wanted to share a, I wanted to share my experience because I just finished getting all my signatures for this next election coming up. And I went door to door to get my signatures in the community. And I, I guess I got the response that I expected to get, but didn't expect to get at the same time. And many people, even with their enthusiasm, with, with me wanting to be part of this, many people laughed and asked why, why? You know, we're in receivership. What is, what is, what is the purpose? And I'm bringing that up because of the climate and culture thing, you know? I really feel like it's important to be thinking about climate and culture, not just in the, in the classroom. And I know that you're doing a lot of stuff with, with news, excuse me, with newsletters and information and things like that. But I'm not speaking to what is being done. I'm speaking to the perspective or the perception that the community has about what's happening with the schools. And so even, you know, every conversation that I had with all these people about all the great things that are happening, you know, it was hard to convince people of the good things that are taking place. And I reminded myself of something that Mr. Mertz said, and I think it was a great thing to say in our last school committee meeting, when we had our first public participant who spoke about a concern. And Mr. Mertz said, or she was asked, how can we explain or share our concerns about what's happening in the schools? And that particular situation happened to be with masks. And we know that mask situations are a pretty publicized, you know, political situation sometimes. And everybody's got their own, own feeling about it. But the response was, you come here, right? And that was a great thing. And I feel like that sets a great tone for how we want to be perceived by the community. But, but my concern is that we skipped two meetings in the, in the, in the last few months. We skipped the January meeting, and we skipped the March meeting. And I understand that maybe we didn't have budgetary things that needed to be discussed, or maybe there wasn't anything that was major that needed to be pressed upon to the community and to the committee or to anybody else. But I think that it's still, if we have the opportunity to meet, regardless of whether there are important things that we need to discuss, I feel like we need to have those meetings. Because there's a variety of different things that we can offer the community. And even though we have receivership, where Dr. Villar runs the show, and that's just the way things go, I think that there's other opportunities for us to use what we have here to benefit our community and schools to help with climate and culture. Because if our community isn't buying into what, what's happening, even though there's good things happening, then we need to, I feel like we need to provide them an opportunity to have a platform to speak about those things. And then we can help people understand the good things that are happening. And in that way, we can continue the work that's being done with climate and culture. Now, again, I'm a teacher. And for me, climate and culture is the most important thing to help students learn. Because if climate and culture are lacking in any way, then the learning isn't going to take place. There's not going to be any buy-in. Teachers aren't going to be doing their jobs the way that they need to. Parents aren't going to be helpful the way that we need them to be. And students are just going to do whatever the heck they want. And so I really feel like, as a committee, if we can do anything to be helpful to what's happening in the Southbridge Public Schools, you know, I know that we have budget things and things like that. With the way things are currently, I really feel like the climate and culture piece is the place where we can do the most good. And I feel like having our meetings every month in a, at a time and a day that is reliable for people to tune in and have an opportunity to either come and speak, or just hear what's being done, I think it would be great. And so that's my last comment on that. But I guess my question to you, Dr. Villar, is that if we had a meeting like I just described, would you feel comfortable if we invited teachers and students or having to speak to, to their experience in the schools, even if you were not here to be presenting something major? Would that be something that you would be in favor of, just so that we can continue on with the climate and culture piece and try to build on that with the community as a whole?
So I think your proposal of having the school committee work with the community to better understand what happens in the school makes perfect sense. In my experience over four years, that's not always been the case. And I know we have an election coming up, so we'll see what the body holds after the election. So I'm a cautious individual. Having staff come before any elected body without the superintendent in place, in my experience of having done this as a district leader since like 2003, no, that's not a great idea. But having presentations and students and showing the community what we're doing, yeah, that's a great idea. And there, there needs to be much more communications about things that happen in our schools, because there are a lot of really good things that happen in our schools. And most of what's talked about in the community about our schools is based on things that happened a long time ago, that it just don't happen anymore. And that's one of the reasons why I bring all you folks and anyone on the town council into the buildings, so they can see, you know, unannounced, without any plan. So it's just, this is what it is. And I think folks have experienced that our schools are actually very well-run, and there are a lot of really good things that are going on in the schools. So, you know, I've pledged this body that I would be here quarterly. I said that to Mr. Mertz quite some time ago now. And we've done that, and we're going to continue to do that. And as this relationship improves, and I really feel as it is, I think that this group of folks before me, serving on the school committee, have done a good job of representing the school committee, in my estimation, over the last four years that I've been here. So I'm appreciative of that. And so I think we have to continue to grow that partnership, because I do agree with you. If we can get the word out, it's going to make a big difference.
Can I ping off of you? Because I got a question that you brought up that's going to stay with you, and then I'll move on to you and Mr. Tomo.
Okay.
Because you have a question. We used to have a student representative here that showed up prior to some contentious debate, which, to be honest, your office did not communicate thereafter, after a particular school committee meeting, which I was on your side with, because it was very contentious. Would you be open that if we hold a school committee meeting, to Mr. Messier's point, that the, the student president of high school, which I believe was the past representative, arrived to these meetings to give us a student perspective? Because their perspectives, honestly, better than mine as a parent, because my kid is 13 years old. He's a typical teenager. He'll tell you, he'll tell me what I want to hear. The teachers tell me what I need to hear. But from a student's perspective, at looking at the schools, I think it would be very good. Would you be open to having the student representative rejoin the body, given this body that you see in front of you?
So again, you know, yes, we've had a good, good partnership here. Unfortunately, the reason we don't have a student rep is not the result of this particular body. But in previous experience, meetings were very contentious, to the point where at one point, I had a representative coming to those meetings who left in tears, came to my office feeling horrifically treated by the elected body. So that's not an environment in which you put a child. And so, again, we have an election in one month, and then, you know, I have to see what our school committee looks like. I'm very appreciative of all the effort each individual here has done. And I think that is a good step. If we have a body that's working and we're functioning at a high level, the learning opportunity for our student to participate is excellent. If it's devolved into something that is unprofessional and resulting in adults leaving in tears, I'd be irresponsible to have a child attend that. So, you know, that's kind of how I'm viewing the situation. I'd be happy to talk more with you after and, and figure out our approach. But I want to be clear to everyone sitting here before me, you do have my appreciation for your efforts. They're not lost on me, that you have tried to conduct this body in a very professional manner. And I appreciate the fact that you're putting your own time in to the efforts that we, I believe, all want to see happen, which is improve the schools here in Southbridge. So I'm very appreciative of that. And I certainly will consider your request. But I do want to make sure that we set our students up for good learning opportunities.
You had a follow-up, and then after that, I'll move on to Mr. Tomo.
So I can understand your trepidation based on past experiences. I guess, I guess I just wanted to go back. So barring, barring where we are after the elections and your view of the committee, it sounds like you're, you're open to the idea of having students come and speak. And potentially, if, and I guess this is the second thing, if a teacher, because you already said that you'd be uncomfortable with having a teacher speak. But in the district that I work in, teachers speak about the, teachers are invited to speak about the things that they've done that are great. I guess what I, I'd like you to think about is if you had the opportunity to nominate teachers based on the good things that they're doing, and just to have them come and speak about those things, not, not, not that it would be a question and answer type of thing, but if they could come and speak to their experience, to go back to the retention part, you know, there's some teachers that leave the school district, and they have horrific stories that they're telling. And it would be fantastic to have teachers that have great stories to be told, sharing them with the community as well. And it would be great if you would, if you'd be open to that idea at a future, at some future time. And then, lastly, the only other thing that I thought that might be a nice thing to make sure that we had our meetings for, if those things can't take place immediately, is that at the very minimum, I feel like we still need to keep things open for community members to come and speak, even if nobody shows up. When I first spoke at the podium, and I was asked questions about what I could do and what I wanted to do, I just, I said, I wanted to do the work with you people. And I still want to do the work. And I was also told that we haven't, we hadn't had enough school committee members to have meetings. And now we have enough school committee members to have meetings. And I think that it's really important that even if nobody shows up, we have those meetings. Because that says something about our commitment as a group and as a town to the schools in this town. Okay? That's all.
Okay. And if I may, I just want to point out, in the spirit of collaboration, my office is available, right? You can reach out, we can have meetings. So I will point out, this whole line of discussion is like a T-bone, right? We're going to get you into a meeting, we're going to bring you in public, and then we're going to ask you these really difficult questions in public to see what your answers will be. So it's, you know, not particularly collaborative. You'll find I'm just going to speak the truth. And that why, that's why I could answer those questions. Jeffrey Villar, first year as superintendent back in 2000-whatever, would have probably melted under that line of questioning. It's not really appropriate to do that to your executive. If you're an elected body and I were your superintendent, that would not be appropriate, right? That would be highly offensive to the superintendent, because it's blindside, put on the spot to prove a point. So, you know, again, we're trying to move forward in being a productive, collaborative organization, right, with one sole purpose, which is to improve the school district. But we need to do that working together. And really, you know, coming out the side like that doesn't help me. And I'm just being really honest.
Mr. Tomo?
Suggestions, like Mr. Messier had mentioned. Is there any particular reason why there isn't anyone from the press at our meetings? In other words, does all information regarding the school have to come, or is filtered through you? I think if we had someone from the press here, they would be able to report on what we're doing, what we're supposed to be doing. They would see new members, such as Mr. Messier, great ideas. Or does that information all have to be filtered through your office? And I'm not trying to be a wise guy about it.
I have no control over the press. This is a public meeting. The telegram can be here, channel whatever can be here.
The press was never told not to come to these meetings?
Of course not. In fact, Commonwealth Magazine, I was just interviewed. There's a whole section, you can go read it.
I appreciate the answer. Second, could you give us a quick update on the mask policy?
Yeah, the mask policy was lifted.
It was lifted, okay.
Students may continue to wear masks, and there are many students who do choose to do so. Some staff members choose to do so, but there's no mandate.
Okay. Title, is it Title I at the high school? What's the federal, head start? They're at the high school?
No, they're, yeah, they're at the old high school, 25 CoLab.
I happen to live up by there, and I see it all the time. I think it's, they're just adorable. They're out for their exercise. They're all holding their ropes. There must have been about 40 of them, 30, 40 students walking. And they all had masks on. It was a beautiful day, sunny day. This was last week. And, you know, they had, they were masked up more than a mummy is masked up. It was on tight. And the teachers weren't. And to me, the kids looked sad. And, and I was really disappointed in that.
Anything that happens at the office- Anything that happens at the Office of Head Start during my experience with previous superintendents, prior to receivership, because I served on the Policy Council.
Oh, no, I'm not blaming you, I'm just wondering why.
Prior and during, the, the South Bridge Public School District has nothing to do with it, other than collecting rent.
That's correct.
But it's all laid out by the Office of Head Start, and the Office of Head Start's guidelines are that students are to be masked because they are under the age of safe vaccination, and it is a requirement for staff that is not vaccinated, but an option for staff that is.
None of the staff were masked, there were about four or five of them.
I do still have friends that a majority of the staff, especially that faces the students, are vaccinated. But that's determined by the Biden administration and the Department of Education. So do you have any other questions for him? I'm sorry to interrupt and answer that to him. I just had experience with it, so I apologize.
No, that's fine. I was just wondering if they were under your...
They are not.
Andrew?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, Dr. Villar, when you're talking about our line of questioning and sort of being blindsided, are you referring to Tim's questions?
Specifically, the members on...
Mr. Messier?
Sorry.
I am sorry.
Another member.
You can't name another member during parliamentary...
Yeah, I was referring to the questions about whether or not I was going to participate, bring staff in, bring students into the school committee.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to clarify, because we do want to be learning to collaborate, and that is something that I feel like, in some ways, we kind of almost like need training. I, I don't know if that's a, that probably sounds silly, but it's, it's tricky for us too, to even know what's expected of us up here and what things, like if, if someone does have a question regarding, or an idea, what is the best way for us to address that? Because we can address it in email, and sometimes we do, as you know. And, and sometimes those are received well, and sometimes they're not, or sometimes we feel like, oh, maybe that wasn't the right place to address it. And so, we've kind of, I think, different ones of us have been a little bit confused as to when is the best time and the best way. And partly, I think a lot of us are just not always great with personal relations. And, and I will put myself in that category, we probably, we probably all could put ourselves in that category, that sometimes we just say the wrong thing at the wrong time, in the wrong tone of voice, in the wrong tone of email, or whatever. And, and so, we're not wanting to do that, we really aren't. And sometimes, like, I didn't feel like anyone here tonight was intending to blindside you with anything, and yet, you felt blindsided by something. And so, I think, maybe if you continue to give us feedback, for one thing, so that we know what your expectations are, that is really helpful. That is one thing I had thought about bringing up at this meeting tonight, was to just, if you have suggestions for us, or if you want to even just do a training session of, hey, for you guys as school committee members, if you have thoughts, you know, the more we learn about the school, the more questions we have, the more ideas we have, and the more we feel like you're the one to present them to. And there aren't too many opportunities for us to do that, except for email, or we can meet you in person. And I'm very thankful, you have been willing to meet with us in person, and you have been willing to respond to emails and all those things. But if you have additional guidelines for us, or suggestions for us, I would, I would appreciate them. So we are trying to move forward, we are trying to get better, but it may take some patience and some additional learning.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, through you. I do believe that our purpose here, and I don't understand all the purposes yet, I'm the new kid on the block, but I do understand that a part of our purpose is to learn. Part of our purpose is to benefit from the experience of the receivership. Because if our schools are in receivership, eventually, our schools are going to be out of receivership, hopefully. And I think we need to, as a committee, be prepared to step in and be able to work alongside with the new superintendent on a very positive vein. Now, I think we're working very positively in a vein with Mr. Villar. I'm very, very pleased with what I have seen so far. And I think that, you know, we want to be cooperative with the receivership. We're hoping that the receivership will also have the same goal, to do what he can with our committee. And we have no demands, we have no complaints, now, I don't have any complaints, and we have no personal agendas. What we're looking to do is work together with the receivership and grow, and be able to be prepared in the future to work with a future superintendent. That's all I really wanted to say.
I don't disagree, I think that is the goal.
In the past, I've had some questions, or people have called me regarding issues, that I didn't feel should be brought up at, at a meeting. And I've called Mr. Villar numerous times, and he was more than accommodating, to come in, make an appointment, and we would talk about what was brought to my attention, and we handled it that way, very open in terms, I have to commend you on that.
Mr. Messier?
Through you. So I want to just clarify, I was not trying to offend you through my questions at all. My, my real goal, and I hope that that is the, the lasting sort of memory of my, my whole kind of spiel, I guess, is that we've missed two meetings in four months, and I guess my purpose of asking those questions was to sort of vocalize brainstorming, some ideas of ways that we can use this platform to benefit our schools and to build culture. So I apologize for making you feel like I was blasting you, but that wasn't the purpose of, of my, my stating those questions whatsoever. I totally, like I said, I understand your trepidation with including some of those things at the current time. I totally get it. So I was not meaning to offend you in any way. And so I hope that that isn't the lasting memory of, of my whole point here. It's just that I really want to make sure that we can get our community to rally behind our schools. And I just feel like the best way that we can do that is for people to see and hear as much as they can that's going on in our schools in a positive way, from people other than just the people that are in this room. That's all.
Well, and I appreciate it, no need to apologize, it's not a matter of offense, to the point of trying to create a relationship that works. We need your passion and energy, we need the energy that everyone has here to move forward. And I understand Mr. Melo's point as well. What I've said all along is I have to balance the time that I put into developing a school committee and turning around the school district. And it's been a lot on the school district side of that equation, and so that takes a lot of the time and energy. But I'm, it's not lost on me that the end game has to be, at some point, shifting and supporting a handoff to the school committee. That, in fact, has to happen. It's, it's part of the, the end game plan here. So you're not wrong, it's just a matter of balanced time and when we can do it all. So as much as you need some patience, I need your patience, and, and again, the door is open, I will meet and talk with any one of you when you need to. And I have committed to coming to meetings, obviously, it's not every meeting, but this is a growing relationship. And as we get productive, I do want a time when I bring more faculty members. Ms. Seifert here behind us is like the first person on my team that's come to one of these meetings in like two years, right? And she is a critical part of the team, but this is kind of like us opening the shell a little bit, right? I'm going to bring someone in. It's important. But you have to understand, the role does cause intimidation to people who work for the school district. And so it's, all these things are really important. So I do appreciate it, but again, I, I continue and remain committed to working with this body.
Good.
Any other comment or question?
Just going back to, I'm not supposed to mention names, but I get annoyed and I feel sad when people question why we want to be on the school committee. I've had that happen to me too. You know, you really want to do that? Yes, because we care about our schools, we care about the kids, we're interested in really finding out what's going on firsthand. And it's just too bad, I feel that these people, some people maybe aren't as invested in their own town, and it's sad to, to have that happen. And, you know, instead of saying, gee, thank you for, for wanting to be on the committee and trying to help, and just, you know, being invested in it. And then about the mask thing, the kids don't have to wear them. I have a grandson who goes to the middle school, and he prefers to still wear it. And I asked if there were kids who still wear the mask, and he said, actually, there are. So it's the student or parent who can make this decision, and I'm glad that there are still kids wearing them. So...
All right. Do we have any other comment or question? Teen, before we adjourn, it's budget season, so this is probably one of the tougher meetings that you're going to have, and there's sure more to come, I'm sure, you and Mr. Racine and your staff. So I appreciate the time, I really do, and the time and effort you put into this, and I do appreciate your leadership. I've been in this district since before we got taken over, during, and the two receivers that sat in that seat prior to you. So the work that you've done and your staff and, and the team that you've built around you have done a very, very good job. I see the difference in my son going to school. Again, still a teenager, still have to deal with teenage boy stuff, but he, I see the different student that he's become over the last four years. So I, that, that speaks wonders more than anything. And my son is one of those that does wear his mask, but it depends on which day of the week he feels like wearing it. Tuesday, he'll wear it, Thursday, he's not going to, because he doesn't feel like it or he forgot it. He's 13. But what I do see in front of me, which I'm extremely helpful for, is a district staff that is willing to meet with a governing body that doesn't have authority, because we are not necessarily a governing body, but we are a body of passionate people. And, and we are here not for money, we are here not for glory, we are here not for power, we are here to try to make a difference. And, and I think that that resounds throughout tonight's meeting, though contentious and some, some harder questions, but that's what a passionate body does. You use your brain, you think, you ask questions that are right on your mind, or give ideas. And at this, right here, this whole meeting tonight, I think, to your point, has shown that this body that sits in front of you has gone a long way in, in four years. And, and I do look forward to seeing you next quarter, after the election, because I know we still got to get through the end of the year, which is a challenge for district staff in and of itself, especially with the graduation coming up soon. But I, and I do appreciate everyone's time this evening. Our next scheduled meeting would be Tuesday, April 10th at 7:00 PM, and that would also be...
May 10th?
May 10th, May 10th. Been a long day. Would be Tuesday, May 10th at 7:00, and this would also be the last meeting for this fiscal year. Normally, scheduled meeting for June would fall on Election Day, but not really be poised to have that while people are still voting. So that being said, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote is unanimous, this meeting is adjourned.